For which it stands, my nation, our God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please may I stand for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Vess, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Here.
Commissioner Vogler?
Here.
Commissioner Boyd?
Here. I will note that we're being livestreamed right now. It's being broadcast out to our YouTube channel from public consumption. We're also being recorded internally for our purposes and the following minutes. That if anyone has any business to be brought up for the board, we'd ask that you come up here, sit down and speak into that microphone just so we can pick it up. On that note, row officer reports and comments. I'm looking at the audience today. I'm seeing one row officer with us today, our controller, Mr. Prespin Dave, do you have anything to report about me and all that's already on the agenda? Great. Public comments. We have a member of the public here who wishes to make comment. Awesome. Fiscal contraction. Our repository properties, we have one property here with us today, resolution possible approval for a poser property, one, two, zero, three, eight, nine, zero, zero, located in Elwood City. I will note that both, that's rare, both the municipal governing body, Borough Council down there and the school district have signed off on the request. The bid amount is for five hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-six cents by John DeBano. And it's property located on Third Street. Questions, comments on the repository property? Vanessa, what's the number?
Two eighty-nine.
Two eighty-nine. I will take a motion to approve two eighty-nine.
Send the-
Second. Motion secondly for discussion during that question on the motion. Vess, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have no advertising for bids or proposals. You do have four receipts of bids or proposals, all relating to our correctional facility across the street. We have a warden with us today as well as our controller to open those numerous bids. One is for the chiller replacement project, one is for the security electronic system upgrade project, cameras, one is for the roof fan replacement project, and one is for a ductwork cleaning project. Controller Prespin, you'd be able to come up and open the bids in that order. So first we have the chiller.
Two bids for the chiller project.
I think we're doing the advertising. I almost see the advertising.
First one is from, I'm pronouncing this wrong, Haranik Corporation, and the base bid is four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
David, does it say where they're located?
Union Town Council, thank you. Next one looks like it's from Renick Brothers. Or located in Slippery Rock, Pennsylvania. The bid was two hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars.
Say that again?
Two hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine-
First one with four in front of it gave me a little bit of a heart attack. Dennis, I was there. You're gonna chill.
You're gonna chill.
The next one, the listener?
Next one is security electronic system upgrade.
Security, I will have one.
Yeah, we would have had about four. Get off that help tray and check those spots.
This one is from Stanley Security. Total bid is five hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars.
And this is being paid out of our increased revenues for housing inmates from other counties.
Yes, Commissioner.
That's less of a burden. Still, you know, what's next now? A little beep, but roof fan replacement.
Roof replacement, uh, three. First one is for central heating and plumbing in Newcastle. Total installed price is, as it's written on here, a hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. This is from the Haranik Corporation in Union Town, Pennsylvania. Their base bid is ninety-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Last one looks like it's for Renick Brothers. Their bid is eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars.
And ductwork cleaning.
There's one for the ductwork cleaning. This is also from the Haranik Corporation in Union Town. The base bid is eighty thousand dollars.
Okay, questions, comments on any of those four bids? All right, what we'll do is we'll table these, refer them to the appropriate administrative officials, in this case, the solicitor, the controller, and the warden, anybody else I'm forgetting, and circle back around most likely next week to officially award the bids. Or maybe two weeks from now. Back within the next two weeks, we'll figure out who's getting what. On that note, I'll take a motion to table and refer the appropriate administrative officials.
Send the-
Second. Motion secondly for discussion. Hearing none, question on the motion. All in favor, please, somebody say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Warden, sounds like you're under five hundred thousand total. So thank God. Thanks, David.
And Cam Davis.
All right, we have more registrations for September sixteenth to September thirteenth. It might call the minutes, take the motions, file the warrant registers.
As I'm going through these, and I don't know if it may be just mine, but my first page dated September sixteenth is actually duplicated. I have two. I don't know if that's the case with you folks.
You guys want to save the original? Sorry about that.
No, it's fine. It's fine. I just did. Better to have two than not have any.
True.
Second. Motion secondly for discussion. Hearing none, question on the motion. All in favor, please, somebody say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Up next, we have, I'm working my agenda. Okay. Yep. Minutes from Tuesday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Again, with my call to the minutes, if it goes over, take a motion to approve the minutes or any changes as necessary to be.
Send the-
Second. Motion secondly for discussion. Hearing none, question on the motion. All in favor, please, somebody say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have one written communication today. It's from EPK Consulting LLC, environmental and engineering consultants. Application is a loves traffic stop in Country Sales located at one oh one one Newcastle Road in Plain Grove Township. They're applying for an Act fourteen permit for discharge of stormwater at the Slippery Rock Creek. This is again, the Loves in, right across from Butler, well, actually, mostly in Butler, in Butler County, but it's across from seventy-nine. Questions, comments on this one? Hearing none, take a motion except to file correspondence.
Send the-
Second. Motion second. For discussion, hearing none. Question on the motion on the favor, please, somebody say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Staff reports. We have a member of staff here. Does anything to report about me and all that's already on the agenda? Seeing none. Commissioner reports and comments. Loretta, you're on, Dave.
I have nothing, thank you.
All right. I just have one thing. Route two oh eight, my understanding is it's still held up, Pendott's not releasing the funds, at least as of this morning. And to that end, I've been talking to the Wilmington Township supervisors, and that road is just atrocious. It's getting to a point where if it does not get done with relatively expeditions, you're not going to be able to do it this year. Time's running out.
Yes.
And if they're not able to get it done before winter hits, there are going to be accidents on that road, and there might be, at the end of the day, fatalities on that road if nothing is done to pave it. It's one of the worst kept roads in District eleven. To that end, I'd like to get a formal letter sent out to Pendott. I'd like the commission, all drafted. I'd like the commissioners to sign it. I'd like to go to Wilmington Township, have them sign it. I'd like to go to Plassey Township and have them sign it, basically stating, we have significant concerns with, with the main thoroughfare in the northern part of our county, whereby if this road is not paved and not taken care of, like all the municipalities take care of their roads, like we take care of our bridges, if this road is not maintained to an adequate standard, there will be accidents on it come snowfall, and it will be Pendott's fault. So I'd like to put that in a letter, have you guys check over it, and once everybody here is good with it, I'd like it circulated amongst those two townships, get it sent off. Just for that, I want our concerns on record at this point. This is ridiculous. We can't get this done. It's absolutely ridiculous.
Is there any, any information that has been passed along as to why the funds are being held up?
They're there. They're certainly there.
Right. You know, we had this discussion before.
No, I have no question.
Dan, anything?
Not to split hairs, but let me, let me make certain. Are you referencing, let me go back a step. Pendott indicated that this year, they were going to do work from two oh eight, where it intersects State Route eighteen in Wilmington Township, in an easterly direction into the borough of New Wilmington. And I was on that road over the weekend. All I saw were some red cones, and you indicated they were doing some work for drainage. Okay. Are you referencing that section and the section that takes you to the village of Plassey?
Yes.
The whole stretch?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Yep, I just wanted to make certain. And my, with that being said, should we include the borough of New Wilmington? We probably should. Okay, I'm fine with that.
Absolutely.
And my understanding too is, is the situation from a monitoring perspective may involve, and I need to get confirmation on this from Pendott, but there may now be funds available to get that entire stretch done this year.
Okay.
Just because, again, it is, it is quite possibly the worst maintained state road in Pendott District eleven, and it is absolutely absurd. Originally, it was going to be in June, now it's July.
We talked about it for a long time.
It's absolutely absurd, that can be taken. Absolutely absurd. So I'll draft that later today, get you guys to put your eyes on it. Once everybody got here's good, we'll start. Wilmington Township's already agreed that they're signing off on it. They're, I mean, Dan Kenny, I had to tell Dan Kenny, he's not allowed to talk to Cheryl Moon Sirianni anymore. But it's, it's time to take some official action on that.
I'd offer this suggestion as well, but when you send it, that we copy Senator Vogel, since as, as we speak today, he's still a state senator.
And Park.
And Park went lang, but if we're going to the Plassey Township representatives, we're going to copy them as well.
No, it's fine. I'll see if we can't get someone on that. And if my Pendott needs to put on notice that if something happens, it's not-
We're covering ourselves as well, that we're aware of it.
Yep. On notice.
He needs to be cautious, for sure.
That's all I have. Dan, you're on, Dave.
Thank you very much. Two things. I want to note the recent passing of former Newcastle City Treasurer, Joe Cardella, our sympathy to Mr. Cardella's family. And then interesting that you mentioned State Route two oh eight. I think I told you, but I don't think I told Loretta, about a week ago, I did send an email to Cheryl Moon Sirianni at Pendott asking when they plan to start the resurfacing of State Route sixty-five, East Washington Street, here in the city and Shango Township, along with the section of State Route one oh eight, which is South Croton Avenue down by the City Rescue Mission, down along where it crosses Business four twenty-two. Now, I do notice they are doing some, it looks like utility work on the section of one oh eight. But, and again, you, you're, you're absolutely right. The clock is ticking. It's September twenty, and they've maybe got about a month or six weeks of a window. Because six weeks from now, late October, early November, the snow may be flying. Anyhow, I did ask her for an update on the status, and she indicated that she would get back to me. I've not yet heard back.
On one oh eight, I do recall an article in the Newcastle News, I believe, a small article to say that word, road work would be beginning, so-
Well, that's good. That's, that's-
Let's hope, let's hope that the utility's being done, that that's next on the list.
Let's hope. That's all I have.
Absolutely. Thank you. On that note, we'll move on to the new resolutions portion here. We have our MHDI Health Director, Scott Baldwin, with us today. Scott, would you approach the bench? We've got mercifully only two, uh,
Nice to meet you.
Two resolutions today, and this will be, what are we starting on, Vanessa?
Two ninety.
Two ninety? Two ninety and two ninety-one. Scott, what's going on?
These are, these are two new contracts. They are both for personal care homes located in Lawrence County. The first one, are we doing Rose Estates?
Yeah, Rose first.
Rose Estates located in Newcastle. This is a contract between MHDs and Rose Estates. Contract will run from July first, twenty twenty-two, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The contract will not exceed twenty-five thousand dollars, and it's paid out of block grant funding, and these are for residents that can't live independently, so we can support the services. The second one, again, it's another personal care home located in Elwood City. This will be Northview Estates. The contract will run from July first, twenty twenty-two, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and the contract will not exceed seven thousand dollars paid out of block grant funding.
So in other words, this isn't possibly kind of general fund.
Not at all.
Questions, comments for Director Baldwin?
Just a clarification question. The second resolution notes the, which I'm assuming is the corporate address of Northview Estates Limited Partnership as one oh six east, East North Street, Newcastle.
Yeah.
You indicated the facility, I believe that's the old Elwood, the old, old Elwood Hospital down in the borough of Elwood City. Would that be right?
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chairman Boyd. Absolutely. I will take a motion to approve two ninety, I am two ninety-one.
Send the-
Second. Motion secondly for discussion. Hearing none, question on the motion. Vess, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Up next, we have, thanks, Scott.
See you tonight, Mr. Baldwin.
Yes, sir.
I might be on a Zoom screen.
Oh, okay.
I'll see you then.
Very good. Thank you.
Next, we have two ninety-two. This is very simply complying with recent legislation passed noted in Act fifteen, Act fifty-seven. And what it effectively does is it requires the taxing District imposed tax on the assessed value of real property to adopt a resolution or ordinance within ninety days of the effective date and/or not later, or not later than January nine, twenty twenty-three, directing the tax collector to waive additional charges for real estate taxes and certain situations, certain situations being transferred residential property midway through the year. If they report it to us, they're only required to pay taxes at face versus at a penalty if it's later in the year. I know Rich has, Rich has been calling Jason nonstop about this, and we got to get this done to, so Jason doesn't have to continue to take calls. But I'll take a motion. Honestly, if anybody has any questions or comments, I'll take a motion to approve two ninety-two. We're required to do this on the way.
Send the-
Second, and correct me if I'm wrong, as are each of the municipalities to have their own relevant tax incentives. Yes, yes. Thank you.
All right, we motion secondly for discussion. Hearing none, question on the motion. Vess, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Two ninety-three, we have planning. This is for maintenance of parks and boat launches. Actually, what do we have going on?
Uh, this is just, good morning, by the way. This is a request for bids. We're going to bid out all the grass kind for our five boat launches, the parks, and this damage bike trail. So we've just been running into something that's exceeding our threshold kind of thing, so we feel that it's time to, to do that. And I believe they're due October twenty-fourth, I have data for them.
Be interested to see what the total is here. Average employee cost for Lawrence County, when you look at total employee burns, about seventy-two thousand dollars a year. And so to that end, if it exceeds seventy-two thousand dollars a year, it might make sense to onboard another maintenance employee to take care of some of this stuff. The expectation, Dave, is this not a forty-hour-a-week thing?
Boy, yes, exactly.
That's in a regular capacity. So that's, I'll just be interested to see what the prices come at, it is. Any other questions, comments?
Is this applicable to the calendar year twenty twenty-three?
Yes, twenty twenty-three. So we thought we'd get them in. Have you guys taken a look?
In the time to-
Yeah, to, in order to award at the beginning of the year.
To award, right.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Yep.
Take a motion to approve two ninety-four.
Send the-
Second. Motion secondly for discussion. Hearing none, question on the motion. Vess, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have two ninety-four. This relates to Forest Equity Group and the ongoing purchase of the old Elwood City Hospital facility. We're just extending our agreement, whereas the payment to debate bipolaristic county warrants, some of hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents, to be paid to the county owner before October thirty-first. We're just extending that deadline a little bit. I think the original one was, was, it's coming up. Yeah, there's still some i's to be dotted and some t's to be crossed, and so.
Morgan, Jason said it was actually due August thirty-first, and since we, we didn't, we extended.
Oh, there you go. Yep, there we go. So on that note, I will take a motion to approve two ninety-four. Let's see.
Send the- Second.
We have motion second. Any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Two ninety-five. This is relating to election lawsuit that every board of elections in Pennsylvania was just served with, and for Republican National Committee, at all, being Lee Chapman, at all, Lee Chapman being the Secretary of State of Commonwealth, not the acting Secretary of State of Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Again, all sixty-seven counties, including Lawrence County, is going to need those defendants. This relates, I believe this relates to curing the ballots.
Yes.
And so they want a declaratory judgment as to whether or not counties have the authority to, to cure defective mail-in ballots before such time as those ballots may be counted. So we hired these guys to deal with some of the previous election lawsuits that we faced in two thousand and twenty. They did a great job, and the cost, all notice, split up between the counties, which onboard this group, which keeps our costs way down. And ultimately, it's very, it's a very efficient way to handle, you know, the, the, now is a barrage of lawsuits as it relates to the administration of elections. Questions, comments on hiring, ask county. All right, I will take a motion to approve two ninety-five.
Send the-
Second. Motion second. For discussion, hearing none, question on the motion. Vess, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. This next one, two ninety-six, I'd like to table this for the time being. I thought I was going to have some time yesterday. Pulled together a program doc for you guys. I didn't have the time yesterday. I was running around pretty, like crazy yesterday. We, we'll, we'll gather a program doc, get this before the board next, next week, but it's looking like we're going to have about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we'll be able to pay a tribute to the fiscal year twenty twenty-three for municipal road bridge projects. That'll come from a combination of liquid fuels and our, our vehicle registration fee. So, but again, like to table that, we can program doc it, pull it together, sort it back next week, unless I can do a projection of that. Yeah, mine would be cool.
Yes.
I'll take a motion to table two ninety-six.
Send the-
Second. Motion second. Any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion. Vess, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Up next, two ninety-seven. This is just a, a pleasure amendment for the DA's office. All we're doing here is there was some more revenue as it relates to the coresponder program, so we're increasing the coresponder revenue account by twelve thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars, and increasing the materials and supplies expense account out of that, out of that program by the same. Questions, comments? Take a motion to approve two ninety-seven.
Send the-
Second. Motion secondly for discussion, hearing none. Question on the motion. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Up next, we have some more transfers of funds. First up, out of liquid fuels, this will be two ninety-eight. Transferring from liquid fuels contingency, twelve thousand, hundred and twenty-eight dollars to liquid fuels, major equipment ATV. We're purchasing an ATV for help with some snow plowing and some other areas. And so again, this is going to be coming out of our, our liquid fuels account. Questions on that?
Just to make it clear, because it does say here, as you just noted, purchase of ATV for snow plowing and salt spreading. Just want to make it clear, as we said countless times, we don't own any roads.
Right.
Period. The county owns no roads. This plowing and spreading would be for our parking lots and sidewalks on property that we do own.
Oh, and bridges.
And to say, and bridges, Dan. Well, liquid fuels, yeah, that's true. They need to go out and solve a bridge. We can solve a bridge. Yep.
Good point. Yep, liquid fuels, it's bridges. Two ninety, so I don't think, do we do a motion second yet?
Not yet.
Take a motion?
Send the-
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion. Vess, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Two ninety-nine, we're moving some money from liquid fuels contingency to fuel. It's anybody's guess as to why we might need more money for fuel this year.
Yeah.
If there's any questions, comments, I'll take a motion on two ninety-nine.
Send the-
Second. Motion second. Hearing none, question on the motion. Vess, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Three hundred. Moving some money from commissioners contingency maintenance and repair and refuse for our dumpsters for Russo's office. And we're with the move there. We're still kind of getting those finances sorted out. I will let him have a Joe look into our, our dumpster contracts. My understanding, we might be able to get some better pricing with some other companies, so we're checking and seeing, you know, if we might be able to save some cash there. I'll take a motion on three oh one.
Send the-
Second.
Motion secondly for discussion, hearing none, question on the motion. Vess, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Three oh one, this relates to the action we took salary board earlier today, giving the DA's office a little bit of that, that bump, that they're going to need to onboard that head commander position to allow for coordination of our narcotics, narcotics office out of the DA's umbrella. So I'll take a motion on three oh one.
Send the-
Second. Motion secondly for discussion, hearing none, question on the motion. Vess, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have ten thousand here from our contingency COVID-nineteen maintenance. This relates to some of the spraying that we do whenever our office has a confirmed positive, and we immediately go in there and it's pretty close down, need a little bit more money in there through the end of the year. Questions on that?
No.
Take a motion to approve three oh two.
Send the-
Second. Motion second. Hearing none, question on the motion. Vess, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So administrative transfers. We have three hundred and twenty-five dollars moved from jurors and ports to travel and training. I guess they have, they're going to a couple seminars, a couple areas away from the county complex that need some money for our travel and training. Commissioners, removing six hundred and twelve dollars from general lab and the materials and supplies. That's more an accounting thing than anything. Just moving money from one account to another account because the controller box requires that we use the one account instead of the other account to pay for a, a purchase. This is, that's card right. There we go. Oh, when Jerry sends something up, we just approve it, because Jerry asks for nothing. Jerry asks for nothing.
He is so well-maintained.
Well, do it. He is, he is the least, least maintenance magisterial that we have. Such a huge amount though. Dollars, sixty.
I know. We might have to start questioning that. Too many zeros.
Too many zeros. What the hell, Jerry? Sixty dollars. All right, I'll-
It's safe for the rest of the year if you're not-
That's all we have. That's all we can do for it. I'll take a motion to approve administrative transfers, eight percent.
Second.
Motion secondly for discussion, hearing none, question on the motion. All in favor, please, somebody say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All put the same sign, motion carries. No awards is on the table for adoption of the final. No warrants is on the table for a duck for the final action. There will not be a commissioners meeting on Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. We have been ordered to be in court as it relates to the Elwood City Hospital. Um, so that'll be an interesting one. I have to say, it's not every day that the three of us together
Yes.
are ordered to appear in court, it's, it's, you know, the ten o'clock time is inconvenient, but it is one of those. And there are others, we're not the only three.
Right.
Um, then we have, uh, commissioners meeting, next one will be October fourth, twenty twenty-two, and the prison board meeting, uh, has been canceled. Anything else?
Not business.
I think that's it. Great.
That's it.
Uh, any additional public comments?
Can you elaborate on why and where and when they're going to be in court?
We're going to be at this time next week in court as it relates to the Elwood City Medical Facility. I don't know exactly why.
Court, like federal or?
Act.
Our courtroom.
Judge Acker, honestly, in his capacity as clerk, or judge of the Orphans Court, uh, Attorney Madore has the specific information. But you may recall that when, uh,